And council members will move on in the agenda to the second item, which is the Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan. And committee members will recall that since last year, when we shifted the, what was then the senior ombudsman position into Neighborhood Community Relations Department and reclassified that as the senior community specialist. We have been working on this plan. It's been before us in the past, and we have authorized continued work. And so here with a report and recommendations for action is the senior community specialist, Christina Kendrick. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So, yes, I was here in May and presented where we were at and how we were going forward since the former model, the senior ombudsman model, did transfer into, out of the Health Department, which it was originally in, into the Department of Neighborhood and Community Relations. And I was hired and hit the ground running. This was something that's been manifesting over quite a long time, and it was time to just go forward. We started off just looking at really what we were trying to, and who we were trying to plan for. What I thought was really interesting is after the 2010 census, a quarter of our population is over age 50. That translates into 90,000 people, over 90,000 people. In the next five years, that's actually projected through the State Demographer's Office, a conversation with them. They projected Minneapolis proper to grow by about 19% in the next five years from this number. In comparison, as you can see, I think the term that I always really grabbed onto is the law of large numbers. So it is a quarter of our population, but it's just, it's a really, we're talking about a lot of individuals 50-plus. We convened a steering committee across multiple disciplines. We have city departments, quite a few community partners that span, you know, the University of Minnesota, Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity has a program that works on housing issues for older adults in their home. We've pulled in business, businesses like Wells Fargo. We have representation from Wells Fargo, and they're, they have actually what they call the Boomer Connection Group. So we thought it was important to hear from big businesses, how they were looking at their aging demographic and their employees. Todd Munson, MINDOT. So we really tried to be very strategic in who we pulled in across multiple disciplines on the steering committee. The steering committee has evolved a little bit. People have come and gone as the planning has progressed. It seems that there were better fits from some of these organizations, so a few of the names have changed, and I'd be more than happy to give you an updated list. So the planning commenced, and as we started to structure what we thought our vision would be, our mission would be, we felt it really important to reach out to the community. That is our role as the Department of Neighborhood and Community Relations, as community engagement. We identified six community groups. Actually, we identified more than that. These are the six that we were actually able to schedule within this timeframe. We are still going to be going forward with engaging other community groups to get their input. It was very, very useful, this plan from beginning to end, really evolved to what I'm going to be presenting clearly because of the input from these community groups. They were very integrated into this, and I will be going out to the community groups and reporting back how their decisions and their input was influenced, the framework that we've got today. We had over 70 participants in total from these community groups. The fun thing is I was able to get some funding, which you'll see me again coming before, to accept and appropriate. Going forward, I'm going to be partnering with the Health Department to do some focus groups. And we were planning about 16, so it'll be even a deeper level conversation throughout Minneapolis and even teasing out the idea of going to some of the suburbs to find out exactly why maybe as someone aged, they decided to move out of Minneapolis, or are they considering moving in and why? Just kind of just asking those questions that I think there's a lot of assumptions around and really making sure that we are being as mindful across our city's service delivery and planning to hit those points that people are bringing forward. So we had, we have quite a bit of progress that we accomplished in a very short period of time. This is where we started from in 2012, when the, when I was hired. And right off the bat, we had a solid steering committee, had our first planning session, which is what I presented to you in May. We started our community engagement sessions right after our first planning session, so we realized right from jump, we wanted to hear from the community on the front end instead of the back end. And we just finished our last planning session last week, so turning it around to be here today. Yeah, this is fresh. You're absolutely right. Right hot off the press, I think they say. So you probably remember this from a few presentations that I've done throughout city departments. Some of this was already in the presentation I did in May, but this is our vision, and really the focus is to be that premier location, not only for residents who are here, to draw older adults into the city, to have them consider this being their home and community, but also for people who come and go. I mean, we want people from all over to come through our city and just feel that it's inviting, inclusive, supportive, embracing. As you're an older adult, we want to have the amenities available for people as they age that appeal to them, everything from the arts and culture, entertainment and dining, to other opportunities, you know, lifelong learning and health options. So the vision really started that all off to make sure that we capture that, and then we went deeper. And as you'll see, we did highlight very specifics that we wanted to ensure. Most, you would assume, a very holistic approach to quality of life, enjoyment of a city, and enjoyment of your environment. From the community input, we actually, an approach was developed, and this came from our last planning session that took the consideration of the community engagement sessions, their input from the community. And we, the group felt it was really, really important that we were clear on our approach to not only work intra-city, but to reach across jurisdictions, reach out to community-based organizations, and still reach out to the community itself as we go forward and continue developing this plan for the rubber meets the road, if you will, you know, the action steps that'll get this plan accomplished. We also had originally three goals. The fourth one was added, not at this last planning session, but the one before that. The fifth one was added at this last planning session, again, taking the community engagement input and realizing that we have to be very clear in what we're trying to achieve and that we just want to make sure the language of our goals was able to capture very specifics of an older community, of an aging community, the needs of that, as well as being very mindful of people who are involved in their lives, family, friends, employers. So here are our five goals that we are bringing forward to council today, or to committee of the whole today. And the goal number one was actually the last one that was added. We wanted to make sure that we were as inclusive across all city departments, because as we dive into this, there might be some service delivery that we just haven't even thought of. And as we go out and talk to community, talk to community-based organizations, talk to these other jurisdictions, and start sitting down and thinking about how the city itself does its business and its service delivery, we wanted to make sure that we have a goal that we can say we're striving to accomplish with some measurable objectives. So to finish off, we do have a recommendation that we are bringing forward, a resolution for the committee of the whole to consider, for council to consider. As you see, it is to pass the accompanying resolution, which I believe you all have a copy of. And it's really focused on directing NCR staff, which does go beyond me. We, you know, everybody ages. We do have to think in the bigger aspects of this, bringing in our cultural partners within our department as well as in the community, to work with the city coordinator's office, mayor's office, CPED, Public Works, Health and Regulatory Services. Those are the initial departments, but this by no way is all-inclusive, to assess the business plans and service delivery, to develop the objectives and action steps aligned with the goals. I feel that I did a disservice by not including measurable objectives and action steps, but I do want to reiterate that there's no point in even going forward if you cannot be able to show your success and have that as a measurable product to bring forward. So, and then, of course, we will be coming back, hopefully, at the end of June with some great reports on the progress that these departments. I have worked, just in my position, I mean, clearly this was a big part, but I've worked with many, many departments already, and a lot of them do have a focus or a project or program looking at aging or working with older adults. So the good news is that the city has already started a lot of the steps going forward, which is exciting, and it actually helps me when I come in not to have a fresh conversation and re-educate, but to, you know, where are you at? Let's talk about where you're going. Who else should be at this table as you're developing your senior initiatives and senior projects? So I am excited to report on that, that the city is doing good going forward, so.
Thanks. And Ms. Kendrick, I know that we have Ms. Jean Greener from the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee here, but there are quite a few council members in queue to ask questions. So I think I'll take a few questions on your report.
Sure, absolutely. And Jean Green, I'll just, if I could, please. Jean Greener is on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee to the mayor. She is also one of the steering committee members who was involved in this planning, so as you ask questions, it is very possible that Ms. Greener might be a better, because she really carries a lot of history forward, so.
Thank you, and thanks for being here, Ms. Greener, and thanks for your work on behalf of the city, for sure. Discussion on Ms. Kendrick's report, Councilmember Glennon.
Thanks. And I will say, I put myself in queue before you made your comment about how all the staff that would be involved, and I guess I'm not sure if this is part of a committee, because you said to direct NCR staff to connect with. So I'm not exactly sure the ongoing relationship with those departments in recommendation number two. I was just noting that I didn't see any of our public safety departments and police and fire, which seem to have a great deal of connection to our seniors and elders and how they think about how their services should be tailored to our aging community. And so I wonder if you could just comment on connecting with those public safety services.
Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you. I actually have already connected with them. When we put in the city coordinator's office, mayor's office, instead of exhausting a list of how many departments, and I should know this, I've worked for the city for 13 years, but I, what is it, 18 departments? In doing that, we wanted to, we felt that we would be able to state that with the city coordinator's office and the mayor's office, that we would also be capturing these departments that weren't necessarily listed. These are targeted departments for the June 30th report. Most of them already have senior initiatives already up in discussion. Some of them are going to be well on their way and even coming before you fairly soon. So these were kind of intentional to start off with, just for the first six months. You will see the next subset of city departments, which will be the target for the rest of 2014. But I actually have been working with the police department in conversations on even how they collect their information on crimes against older adults. They don't, but we're coming up with a plan on doing that, so we even know what we're looking at. I've just started conversations with the fire department, because interestingly enough, hoarding has become a huge topic in the news, and, you know, as first responders, lately the fire department has had to go into some very challenging situations, and they are predominantly elderly. So that's just kind of the in, which by no means is that the end of any conversation with the fire department beyond that. But that's been the very immediate conversation about the fire department and how they are interacting and engaging and able to give us some information. I don't think we have a full grasp at all on that particular issue, especially as it relates to an older adult. So I am, I have been in conversation.
And Councilmember Glennon, I also note, or I guess for Ms. Kendrick as well, you can really see the connection between the five goals and to these departments that are listed here. And I can imagine, as we talk about all services, these safety services may be some that rise to the top. And also, the language in the resolution is a little more about coordinating efforts between these departments, not so much connecting, it's just a little difference.
Courtney is a good word.
Thanks. For further discussion on this report, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm particularly pleased to be bringing this forward, as you can imagine. When we first met as a council, as we started establishing our city goals, we identified that seniors were a major focus of where should we be moving forward. And we had the goal of many people won Minneapolis, and one of the strategic directions was seniors stay, talents are tapped. And it was Councilmember Colvin Roy, Colvin Roy and myself who said, this is something we really need to focus on. And so one of the, early on, what we decided and what we thought would be the best approach was to really bring this through the Neighborhood Community Relations Department, rather than the senior ombudsman's office, which has been primarily service delivery. We really identified the need to have, put a strategic direction forward that said we needed to really research. So a lot of the, what we're bringing forward today is exhaustive research, and your first report back to us in May established some of those numbers that we're looking at, the law of large numbers. And it's of significant importance. So as we realized, we didn't have to do this alone, because we had a great relationship with our county, who has the same issue. And as we want to grow a city, the easiest way to grow it is to attract new people, but the best way is to retain our existing residents and providing lots of choices for them to live and stay and be mobile and accessible to our city services. So we're going to see a lot of collaboration between our jurisdictions with the park board, with the schools, as we look to multi-generational kind of activities, how we're using our facilities, how we're working with our transit systems. All these things are going to come together. So I'm particularly pleased that this is coming forward as a framework that we're adopting to go forward. It's really putting it out there that this is something that's going to stay in our minds, and we're going to look forward to seeing how it's implemented throughout the next several years as we continue to grow a city. So one of the first steps is to actually talk to the coordinator's office departments, and that was an eye-opening and welcoming conversation that I know you had with all those departments. So I'd like to always acknowledge City Coordinator Paul Ossen, who convened that group. And then as we put this in the Neighborhood Community Relations Department, the next step is to take it out to the neighborhoods, and because this is a big part of all of our neighborhood organizations and what they want to accomplish and help them achieve their goals and plans. So I'm obviously very pleased with the framework that we're adopting and ask for my colleagues' support on the resolution as we continue to refine and make that stronger. So we'll be looking forward for additional comments from folks over the next cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Further discussion, Councilmember Hofstadt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am really pleased with this report. This has been a focus of mine for a number of years. And so having the stronger integration with, and more community engagement, I think, is really critically important as we develop a strategy. I have a couple of concerns, however. In my experiences in working with the elderly in the city, that their number-one primary concern is public safety, and that that is their number-one concern. If they're afraid to go outside of their homes, if they feel there's not appropriate public safety, we won't keep them. And the second is, or probably the second and third, is the whole issue of transportation. And we have some areas of our city where there are transportation needs that haven't been addressed for a variety of reasons. And seniors really depend on having transit, either mass transit on a regular basis, something that is very close to where they are. And in some areas of our city, they need to walk three or four blocks. In the wintertime, it's not possible for them to do the basic services. So I'm just wondering, as you're looking at this, and your goal is strengthen and promote safe transportation, if, how it fits in with having transportation, because there are some parts of our city where there is just really a lack of transportation. I mean, it's just, we are not servicing our seniors well. So I wonder if you could just speak to that for a minute.
Sure. The goal was structured to be broad enough to consider all modes of transportation, from walking to public transit to even driving. And safety is, actually, safety was a conversation throughout this whole, with the structuring of all the goals. And we did spend a lot of time on it. As objectives get fleshed out, that's where those specific action steps and everything from looking at how our transportation now is serving the communities, how it's not, you know, everything from, you know, changing how buses even stop, you know, they used to stop every block and now they don't, does create an issue for an older adult. So really, just kind of sitting down, looking holistically, clearly, transportation is something that the city has X amount of control over. This is one of those examples of reaching across jurisdictions and seeing what can be done, how we can, how they can align with what we're trying to achieve, how we can understand, you know, maybe some of their challenges in doing that, and just working together. So public transportation is a huge thing, though, and I hear it all the time as well. Which is also for that, we were very specific in putting "safe" into that. And it does mean not only public safety, but even just, you know, drivability, you know, drivable roads. Hennepin County's research pulled out that the majority of the older adults, 50-plus as they age, are going to want to keep their cars. They're not going to want to use public transportation if they don't have to. I wonder, though, if the reason why is because of the stigma around the safety and accessibility of public transportation? How can we change the perception, the opportunity to use? We have looked to other cities that have addressed this, such as Anoka. I think Dakota County also has, you know, like Metro Links and stuff like that. So we are even looking beyond Minneapolis as to how some of these less-dense communities have tried to solve transportation issues as their population ages.
Well, that's good. I'm really pleased to hear that. But I just wanted to reaffirm the importance of public safety, and without public safety and appropriate housing, we will not meet the needs of our community. And oftentimes, I hear from residents who have moved outside of the city, the reason they moved is because there wasn't appropriate housing for them, and there was a public safety either issue or perception and a lack of transit, or available basic needs, shopping or some way of having that relationship. So I'm really looking forward to a more fully robust, and especially with our partners, I'm really pleased that Jean Greener has been a part of this team and her association with Catholic Elder Care, which has, I think, a very robust delivery system and experience in elder care.
They were actually one of the community groups that we went to and had this conversation where the input that we got from them was integrated and how these goals were developed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hofstadt, I think you bring up a great point about the transit/transportation piece of this, and it's easy to see that in the next few years, as we start having more demanding kinds of discussions about transportation funding, how a community like the elder community who is engaged, organized, can really help in our city-state and nationally, really, to move that conversation along. Further discussion on this report, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'm very supportive of the resolution and the work and all the coordination that's gone on while we're discussing it. I just wanted to highlight two things. I wanted to mention some of the community groups in part of the city where I live. There's the Southeast Seniors that have really played a vital role. I think some of the key to this is actually having door-to-door contact and finding out individual needs and providing resources to individuals. There's also the Seward Longfellow Healthy Seniors Group. Both of those groups have been supported with city funds in the past and do amazing work, and I'm assuming and hoping they will continue to be good partners in this effort as we move forward. I also wanted to highlight a little bit the issue of hoarding, and I realize that hoarders can come in all ages, but there does seem to be a particular issue sometimes with individuals as they get older, and it's harder to carry things and clean and maybe organize thinking or whatever happens, issues associated with aging. And it can be very critical. In fact, it can be life-threatening. There was a couple incidents in the Second Ward. Since I've been on the council, one was a person who, the firefighters were unable to get to her in time. There was a fire, and she died in her apartment. And in another instance, ambulance more recently came and responded to a call. They really had trouble getting any help. The gentleman who was inside the house had to take him out to the front yard, and he didn't survive. So there can be really dire life consequences to this issue. And I think sometimes it's something that creeps up on people over time, and there would be ways, you would think, that resources could come and people could get help sooner. And I don't know if the city can play a role or who can play a role in that effort, but I think it's something I'd like to see us work on. A lot of seniors, a lot of us want to stay in our homes longer, and we need resources to do so. And we do have programs like Meals on Wheels and other things, so if we can see, how could we get house, cleaning house maintenance services provided, kind of in a nonjudgmental way or a helpful way to prevent these, I think would have good outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Further discussion, Council President Johnson.
I think, Mr. Chair, you know, Christina, Ms. Kendrick, the one thing, as I'm listening, and I'm very supportive of this idea, but I also think that it's really important to understand, you know, when we talk about seniors don't have transportation, you know, I'm always stunned to find, you know, as I'm driving around, how many people have, how many cars pull up next to me that are medical transportation, you know? And it's really interesting to me, who gets a ride to the doctor through their insurance company and who doesn't, you know? And I think that would be helpful information. The other thing that I think is really important is that you work closely with the emergency responders. I just spent, and I know that you've been helpful, with a constituent of mine who has mental health issues, but also, what would you call it, physical issues right now. And, you know, the 911 responders have been coming to her home to help her as she's fallen out of bed, as she needs positioning, transfer from bed to toilet, all that sort of thing. And, you know, she's been calling the fire department. That is a very expensive system. So better coordination, you know, she has home health care, you know? How do we make this transition and how do we save ourselves some money and make comfort for the people who are in our community in these circumstances and make a better plan? Because, you know, that was not sustainable. So I appreciate your work on that, but I just think we have to think through what all these systems are and how do we make sure that we're coordinating with the existing support systems that people have, too.
Right, right. Right, right. And I can answer that, if you will, Council President. I have started having those conversations when I first came in, to shift from a service to the remodel to, to the strategic planning model, and this type of structure. I mean, I still do some direct service. There was no way to just do that. As well as, in my former role of the director of the senior center, a lot of them would come to me anyways. And we do need a bigger system to look at what's going on. There are definitely people who can address the specific needs of older adults as they come up, such as the constituent working with you, or even the, the examples that Councilmember Gordon gave. I have, and 311's not listed, but they're a department that I have sat down with and made a connection with a community-based organization, which actually happens to be kind of a subset of the State Board on Aging. It's the Senior Linkage Line. And they are now in the process of creating an MOU to do some, to assist each other with triaging, calls that come in for older adults. And the Senior Linkage Line actually does provide that next level of a little bit more follow-up, follow-through case management. But there are also other systems out there that I completely agree with, such as community health workers, which are covered by insurance, which will come in. And most hospitals have them. If the hospitals don't, they started out of a lot of nonprofits. MVNA is the one who kind of raised the need for the community health worker, which, for lack of a better term, is what I would call a health and wellness navigator, where they'll sit down and, okay, here's the services you need to be hooked up with, here's what'll be covered with your insurance. But, I mean, example of a department that you may or may not think right off the bat would be IGR. And to talk about how some health insurances cover, and how some don't, and what is, what does that look like, and what can we bring forward to those next levels, especially with the ever-so-fun conversation on healthcare as it is, nothing like, you know, adding just one more worm to that open can. So, I mean, but, I mean, these are all great examples and conversations of what we are now starting to talk about with the hoarding house. We actually do have a partnership with Regulatory Services. We have a staff of Regulatory Services who sits in Neighborhood and Community Relations, specifically to address homeowners who are elderly, disabled, and low-income. Oftentimes, it is the three, it's the trifecta, they fit all three. And to help them finally work through and mitigate their issues, their orders. The reason why most hoarders and seniors, are seniors, is because they are not discovered until we do have a situation that's not positive, you know, like a fall, or there's a responder. And that's when it's discovered. So that's why they are often seniors that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Hofstadt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had just one quick question regarding the relationship with public housing. I'm assuming that public housing was included in this discussion, or...
They're on the planning committee.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Tato.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just wanted to add to something that Councilmember Hofstadt said earlier. The housing piece is a big deal. I'm seeing it all over the ward. There, people want to stay in the city, because, for all the reasons everybody wants to stay in the city. But their homes are too big. And we don't have the two- and three-bedroom apartment buildings, multi-dwelling units being built that is in need. What I see is the young adults coming out of school with their first big jobs, that are coming in and looking for one- and two-bedroom apartments, is exactly the same as what people at the other end of the age spectrum are looking for, as they downsize from some of our larger homes, you know, with a library, and a dining room, and four bedrooms, and blah, blah, blah. It's a lot to take care of and maintain. And so they're looking, but they want to stay in the city, but they want to stay on transit corridors, which is really a huge piece. I find it interesting what you've said about public transportation, because I'm just so surprised to hear that. I take the bus frequently, and there's a lot of seniors on the bus. And, but I think that, what I keep hearing, antecdotally, is we want to stay in the city, but we want to be in a transit corridor. They don't want to be shuffled off to Buffalo, or some little cul-de-sac someplace. And that's their biggest fear, is they'll end up out in a first- or second-ring suburb where their friends aren't. Shopping is much more difficult, getting around and coming downtown for things like plays, and music, and theater is really tough. And so I see the piece of affordable housing for seniors, hand-in-hand with being on transit corridors, seems to be a biggie for those folks.
Yep. I just was invited to a meeting with the planning department. They are in the process of just starting to develop what they're calling the Urban Senior Housing Community Model, and, which exactly looks at all of that, to link up with Mr. Streits' Senior Housing Initiative, with, which grabs both new development, as well as what can we do with our existing housing stock. So it is about being very mindful, you know, if you're going to build it, where does that need to be built, and what does that look like as far as, you know, with the retail and services and stuff around. So they are already starting those conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note to everyone that in the Community Development Committee next Tuesday, the work that Councilmember Quincy, Reich, and I have been working on with regard to the Senior Housing Funding Initiative is up in front of us. This is an effort to build one senior housing project in each of the 13 wards over the next 10 years, and solutions for funding that construction of housing. I'll note, the biggest issue is seniors want to age in place. They don't want to live in, you know, Standish Erickson, and then have to move to Loring Park. They want to live in an area very similar to where they're living now. And that's why our group thinks it's really important to create one of these, work with partners to create one of these senior projects in each region of the city, so that people can age in place. And that will be, as I said, on our agenda as a discussion item on Tuesday.
Thank you for that notice, Councilmember. Seeing no further discussion from Councilmembers, Ms. Kendrick.
Thank you. I'd actually like to have Jean come up. It was fascinating to sit down and speak with her on her history, her involvement. Even before the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and all the work, she's been an advocate, and an instrument in the community for older adults. And some of the history that she just showed me, it just, it's, it's very relevant to what is going on today. So I'd love to turn it over to Ms. Greener.
Thank you. And Ms. Green is a very familiar face to many of us here on the council. And again, thank you for all of your service to the city, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you all. I hope I'm a familiar face and a pleasant familiar face.
A very familiar face.
I seem to be living out the vision of Minneapolis for a lifetime, sitting here and listening to all of you. I know all of you have people in your wards who have been born and have lived out their life in Minneapolis. My mother was born in Ward Eight and died in Ward Eight. I grew up in Ward Eight, although I started in, closer to the downtown area, and lived in Ward 13 for a long time. And now I am happily living in Ward Seven, and I walk in Loring Park every day. So all of you have had a part in this. Community for a life, Minneapolis Community for a Lifetime is not a new idea in Minneapolis. I think many positive things have happened over the years. In the last several years now, the structure of how the city wants to move this vision forward has changed. And as, as useful and wonderful as the Office of the Ombudsman was for a long time, and, you know, what Ruth Kildow did, we had to make the change to move things forward in a more efficient way. And I think many of us are very grateful to you for doing that. We appreciate what Christina's doing, and what is happening in our new department now. So what I'm here to do is not to go through the history, although I have studies from 1999, 2001, 2006, and then the most recent ones that the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee have done. The priorities are very similar: safety, housing, transportation. And I might say, when seniors say transportation, they often mean a ride. And, you know, these are the things that are important. I think Minneapolis can continue to be at the forefront of being a livable community for seniors, if you all are willing to take the action and make sure that resolutions get implemented. I think over the last 14 years, it's been a bit of a frustration, because studies have been done, focus groups have been held, surveys have been taken, recommendations have been made, and it doesn't seem like a lot has happened. And so, we view what is happening right now as really a positive change, and that a year from now, some of us can stand before you, and thank you for some significant changes that have occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, for your insight. And also, thanks for bringing up Ruth Kildow's name. And we just owe so much gratitude for Ms. Kildow, for her work over the years. And also, thanks for acknowledging the new approach, and giving your endorsement, and your
Absolutely.
cooperation in that. And I think one of the things that many of us hope to accomplish with the establishment of the Neighborhood Community Relations Department, was a better integration to the advisory groups in the actual governing of the city. And hearing you talk, hopefully, like that, I think really encourages us that we're moving towards success.
I think to have process in place, and structure in place, to support resolutions and implementation is really important. And that's what I see all of you working towards. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Any further discussion on the Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan? Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a staff recommendation to approve the accompanying resolution to coordinate the city's role in implementing the framework for the development of the next phase of the Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan. Also, to direct Neighborhood Community Relations staff to connect with the city coordinator office, mayor's office, CPED Public Works, Health, and Regulatory Services, to assess and develop objectives and action steps to inform Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan. And finally, to direct Neighborhood Community Relations staff to report progress on the next phase of the Minneapolis for a Lifetime Strategic Plan by June 30, 2014, using this framework. And I will move those staff recommendations. Discussion on that motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? That carries. Ms. Kendrick, thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.